Welcome everyone to the Monday, May 12th, Duxbury Planning Board Meeting. First on our list, our agenda is the two items. We have two items, one is from April 28th and anything that the planning board has administrated lately. So do I have a motion to approve what is being approved from May?
So who?
And a second?
Sir.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? Our whole vote to approve Amendment 28, all those papers, I oppose. Thank you. All right. Do we have anything under the administrative part? All right, we have five people online. Emily, can you see there's more than five or just five? Five, okay. All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have our 6:00 PM public hearing for Special Town Meeting 2025 Accessory Dwelling Unit APU Proposed Zoning Amendment. And I have some remarks, so we can go ahead and talk. Next, you can hear before we start, I'm going to go ahead and do that. So welcome everyone for joining us tonight for the public hearing on the proposed zoning amendments for accessory dwelling units and MBTA communities overlay districts. For each hearing, the board will discuss the relevant amendment and then invite the public to ask questions or make comments. We'll then vote on whether to recommend it to the Blackboard as a amendment here on warrant of the June 16th special meeting. For both of them, we will hear from town council and the council and for the MBTA communities overlay district, we'll hear from the MBTA communities working group. If you have any comments or questions, please drop them to me, the chair. We'd appreciate it if comments or questions could be up to two to three minutes. That will give everyone a chance to gather their thoughts, helps us to focus on what's being said, asked and asked, and say it all at once. So before we get out, just four things that I would touch on. The first is zoning. Since we'll be talking about zoning, I wanted to provide a quick explanation of what that means. Basically, a set of rules and regulations which are governed by these two documents here that's been used to govern how real property and real estate can and cannot be used in our town. That's provided by the plan or that one. It's not what the town to be. Years ago, we decided we wanted to foster a rural environment, so we created residential code interest groups for wanting for lots. As our zoning currently stands, there is not a way to build homes, but happily for lots, buildings in clusters, townhomes or condos by rights. The second thing is minimal impact zoning. As everyone here knows, the Commonwealth District requires communities adjacent MBTA transit stations to provide multi-family housing, multi-family housing to support the goal of providing more housing in these parts. Working for a move to discuss this through the South Shore. You know, especially coming in late last fall, we were able to use community order again. So I think it was in a large family project. I'm moving to the three year lot. And you're likely to carry the planning board in that episode for years. But that was far more than enough for my home. One of those differences that I think was very much why it's very little impact requirement. We wanted to incorporate the planning board, like board workers and our community to figure out ways to bring zoning laws with minimal entry. Do this to work with the public forums. We need to leave it to black everyone going on. Third thing is to mesh our systems. One of the other lessons we learned from last fall was that when you did a system from our outreach, with our outreach, we could better engage our communities early and often with the financial order that the community would support for a significant trial. Due to that, we engaged CHAPA, which is Citizens Housing and Planning Association, a nonprofit. His mission is to encourage housing opportunities for all residents in which would provide us the tools and guidance that we needed to navigate MBTA community flaws. The working group took a presentation from CHAPA that they provided and which they then personalized extensively for Duxbury's needs. We'll look at this presentation shortly. The town also hired a new consultant, Metropolitan Planning Council, or MAPC, to assist with the complex modeling of the site so that Duxbury would be compliant with the Executive Office of Housing and Movement for EOHLC and event the article passed. So aside from all the work that the planning board has done on MBTA, any new community bylaws, we have other work involved we'd like to accomplish. One of them is to continue implementing more recommendations from the vision Duxbury, which is our comprehensive plan. It's right here. And one topic that is highlighted in the plan and groups like livable Duxbury Task Force and Duxbury Affordable Housing have come to us to talk about is to create additional housing options in town. We would like to explore this topic more explicitly and with our community instead of later date. For tonight, we're just going to focus on these two hearings. All right, thanks for indulging. Anyone else from the board have anything they'd like to add? Okay. All right, so now we begin a public hearing for Special Town Meeting 2025 Accessory Dwelling Units or APU, a proposed zoning byline. By way of a quick background, effective February 2nd, 2025, ADUs and single-family districts were allowed by right and do not require special permits. However, Duxbury is presenting this APU bylaw to protect the town from short-term rentals and provide site plan review and regulations in terms of dimensional setbacks, site restrictions. So with that, would it make sense to have our town council give a quick overview of the ADUs we're allowing to use here?
Sure.
Do I stay here? Do I go upstairs?
I'm good. Great, great, because I probably wouldn't be able to manage that. So for accessory dwelling units, under the Affordable Homes Act and under Section 7 and 8 regulates the ADUs. And so we talked about this back in February, January, February. And the definition, there is a set definition. The definition is by statute. So the Affordable Homes Act amended 40A, amended Section 1A of 40A, which is the definition of ADU. The definition is 900 feet or half of the primary dwelling and whichever is left. So at the maximum, an accessory dwelling unit can be 900 square feet. And then there, and that's gross floor area. There's also a definition of gross floor area which we have taken from the statute to put into your definitions. So as the chair has said, these ADUs, which are called protected use ADUs, when they meet this definition, they are allowed by right. And so what this zoning bylaw does is it is amending the existing zoning bylaw, which is accessory apartments. It's amending that and it is changing it to the accessory dwelling units. There are the definitions, the definitions track the regulations. So after the Affordable Homes Act, after the amendment to 40A, EOHLC issue, they issue regulations, which are 760 CMR 71. And those regulations, this bylaw is basically follows these regulations in compliance with the regulations. So for example, one parking spot is required unless the ADU is within a half mile of a transit station. You are allowed to preserve single-family characteristics. You have limited, you've limited your ADU to one protected, one ADU, one protected use ADU per lot. You have also required that the legal ownership of the ADU and the primary dwelling not be separated. And the reason for that is to keep the ADU accessory. You've also required that obviously these subjects that have to accommodate the new ADU, because the ADU will have at least one bedroom. And then, as the chair had mentioned, you have prohibited, you've prohibited short-term rental and you're requiring site plan review. There are numerous requirements of site plan review. And we've also added that if the principal dwelling to which the ADU will be added is pre-existing non-conforming, then the applicant has to go to the VDA for a fine day. They do not in any way need to get a special permit because again, the ADU, the use of the ADU is an allowed use by right. And that's, that's it.
So what we'll do, since we've opened the hearing, we start from our town council. We talked about it, we invite the public to answer, to ask any questions. Any questions from the board, from our Zoom callers? Everyone seems to be on mute. Okay. Anyone? Anyone? Okay. Would our planning director like to share any comments? We don't have any other comments. All our candidates, any motions? Votions to vote to recommend favorably in support of approval of the accessory dwelling unit special town meeting zoning warrant?
So who?
Have a second?
Sir.
All right, so any discussion? None. All right, call for votes. All in favor of the ADU special town meeting zoning article?
Aye.
All in favor? You've sent me the question back. Thank you. All right. We're on to the second public hearing. Now, the second place we're going to start at 6:15. We wait five minutes?
Three minutes?
Three minutes. Perhaps we could go on down to Agenda 5 and 4 of them. Does anybody have any? Anybody? Of course, is that to share with me?
No, I don't. Sure. Affordable Housing Trust me. Again, really the only update that is relevant is the RSP East Street one issue. And they had engagement with 18 parties, combination builders and architects. Looking at what they put together. So a couple of serious inquiries and they're trying to spin a cycle on it.
Wasn't there a party meeting before and they only had one or two?
Yes, that's right.
So what was the difference?
Well, the primary difference is that they took out a lot of the constraints. Prior RP was very specific in what they have building a certain size, certain number of units. And in this case, they've said, you know, just tell us what your best idea is. Most very good, cute way to try this.
Anyone else?
It's a matter of time. I'll need the public hearing notice.
Oh, I do.
Do you have that from you?
Yes, I do.
You do, right? Don't be. We still have time.
Can we wave it or do we?
No, you gotta read the public hearing notice. And then after that, you revote to close the public hearing.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, all right. So if somebody would be interested in waving, reading the public hearing notice.
Sure, chapter 2 of the Acts 2023. This meeting will be conducted in person and as courtesy via remote means in accordance with applicable law. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and your participation is being provided as courtesy to the public and board members, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless required by law. Members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so using the Zoom login information provided below. Viewers can visit HTTPS backslash the local scene dot com, I mean, the local scene dot media slash Duxbury backslash for information about Duxbury programming, including streaming and watching replays on Duxbury YouTube.
And so we all need a motion to close yesterday.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I'm Greg Corbo. I am also from town council's office. So you have two public hearings set up for tonight. The first one is for the ADU bylaw. So to formally introduce that, you should read the 6:00 PM and then, you know, where it says what the public hearing is about.
Okay.
Since you've already conducted that hearing, then you can just go on and close the hearing and then open the second hearing by reading in the 6:15.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so now we will close at 6 o'clock. Public hearing again. Read it. It says 6 o'clock and I'm just reading. Okay. We'll close at 6:00 PM? Not yet. First, you need to read the explanation. Do you have that? Oh, okay. Now we'll close. Did you have the agenda where a public hearing on the 6:15? Yeah. Read that there. Okay, so yeah.
So, Madam Chair, sorry. So I would suggest that say, this is a public hearing for the board to consider articles submitted by the board to see if the town will vote to amend and then read the rest of that.
Okay.
After you read that, then you can say, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Okay. Okay. So we would like to know if anyone is voting on? Okay, so we are going to, we've opened, we're going to vote on, and we will close. We voted on, now we're going to close the 6:00 PM article submitted by the planning board to see if the town will vote to amend zoning bylaws to delete Section 401.4, accessory dwelling special permit regulation. This is priority and replaces with a new Section 410.6, accessory dwelling units and further to amend Section 401.2, non-conforming structures, add a new section, 401.26, or take any other relative action. Okay. May I have a motion? We've already voted and we just need to close it.
Correct.
Yeah. All right. To vote to close it.
I'm going to close a public hearing.
Yeah, second. Thank you. All those, we take any discussion. All right, all those in favor of voting on whether it's first day, ensuring of the aye. All of them. Not opposed. I think that might be helpful. I think he writes it. It's not top of the drawing.
That's okay. Yeah, there we go. Now we have to open. In a year's time, Wayne usually reads.
He does.
So Wayne usually goes on.
Thank you. So now we have a motion to open 6:15. Yeah, public hearing for an article submitted by the planning board to see if the town will vote to amend zoning act at MBTA communities overlay district map and to amend the zoning bylaws at any section 440, MBTA communities multi-family overlay district or take any other votes of action.
So who?
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, we'll take a vote in whether to open the capsule. All the care and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so. All right, I guess what we'll do here next is we will go ahead and appear from the MBTA communities working group.
Steve, I think you have a forum of us now, so if you can call us to order as well.
Oh, thank you. That's, thank you, right. Yes, we have it. We have a forum of the town of Duxbury MBTA communities working group on, here on Facebook, 2025. And so as a result of the fact that we have a forum, I would like to call this meeting the MBTA communities working group. Thank you. Yeah, I'll. Thank you. Okay. Hold it up. Can you hear that okay? Or can you hold it up? I'll hold it up. Thank you, everybody. So again, I'm Steve Gant. I'm the chair of the MBTA communities working group here for the town of Duxbury and with the planning board. And so this is a presentation that the working group has put together over the course of several weeks, many different iterations, many edits. Excuse me, as you mentioned, Madam Chair, we have really personalized this particular presentation and made it around really specific to the needs and desires, we believe, of the town of Duxbury. So we'll just jump right into the presentation here. So here's the agenda. First part of the agenda here is understanding the law. We'll talk a little bit about, you know, what the MBTA communities act is. How does the law affect the town of Duxbury? And we'll talk briefly also about the MBTA communities working group itself. Second part of it is Duxbury's response. How are we responding to the law here? So we'll talk about feedback that we got from Special Town Meeting last November. We're going to talk a little bit about the lawsuits that are challenging the law currently. And we're going to talk about also, and this is really the meat of the presentation here, preparing a proposition for compliance. And then on the third, third part of this, we'll be preparing Duxbury's next steps. We'll talk about our proposed compliance strategy and then the opportunities for public outreach that we've already had and opportunities that we have upcoming. So again, very briefly, you know, the MBTA communities act. What is it? This is an act that was signed into law in 2021. Governor Baker assigned it into law at that time. And this particular law requires that 177 communities in Eastern Massachusetts, just numerically, that's just about half of the communities in the state of Massachusetts, 177 communities in Eastern Mass to update their zoning bylaws. And that gives property owners the right to build multi-family housing in some locations within their communities. It's really intended as a measure to increase the supply of reasonably priced homes. And then it allows towns to choose locations. This is the key part here. It really allows towns to choose locations within their municipalities where they'd like to, like to make multi-family housing legal to build. So there's a great deal of flexibility that the town of Duxbury and other communities have to pick these locations. And we'll talk about that here during the course of the presentation. It's also really important to emphasize too, this legislation does not require that the town or anyone else, it does not require that anyone build anything within the town of Duxbury. Excellent. The MBTA communities working group, just very briefly about us. We're residents who were appointed by the select board and we're, they charged us with developing a compliant response to the law. We have seven members and we're holding our meetings weekly on Thursdays, and those meetings are open to the public. We've had a number since, since February, and we're going to be continuing to meet right up until the special town meeting. We've had a number of folks join us from the community, both this year and when we were doing this again last year. And we've gotten some very valuable feedback that we've incorporated into the approach that we're taking as a result of people attending these meetings. So how does the, how does the act affect Duxbury? Well, three primary impacts here. The law requires us to identify at least 50 acres in the town of Duxbury where property owners would have the right to build multi-family houses. That's really the, the area that we need to define. The second impact is that we're required to pass a zoning plan through town meeting. We have to do that by mid-July in order to avoid the legal consequences. So in order to do that, we're to give, you know, to present the, or to act on the proposition that we're, that we're presenting here, our special town meeting will be scheduled for June 16th. So just about a month from now. Now, the third impact, you know, by passing a zoning plan, you know, again, key to emphasize this, Duxbury is not required to build or pay for any housing. We only need to make it legal for the property owners in these proposed districts that we'll be talking to you about to build multi-family housing if they choose to do so. Again, there's no requirement to build anything. So feedback in the fall, from the fall special town meeting. You know, key thing that we want to emphasize here is we, as we have repeatedly, you know, we heard you. We heard the town. Town spoke loudly and clearly that they did not want new building in Duxbury. So we heard that. And so that has informed the approach that we're taking right now. Town meeting rejected a plan that would have zoned the Bonzi's Turkey Farm, that was one of the two areas that we had looked at last fall. That was a property that could have accommodated home building in the short term. And the message that we heard and that the town gave to us is that residents did not want to rezone any properties where the multi-family homes could be built in the near future. And so, but residents did express an interest in whether it was possible to avoid complying with the law. Go to the next slide. So that there's the legalities of the MBTA communities act. Folks will remember in January of 2025, the SJC, the Supreme Judicial Court in Massachusetts, they ruled in the Milton versus Attorney General case, they ruled that the MBTA communities act is constitutional and that the Attorney General has the ability to enforce it. So it is the law. We are right now still seeking an exemption from compliance in a lawsuit that's arguing that the law is an unfunded mandate. The success of that lawsuit is uncertain as of right now. But if a lawsuit does succeed, the state can choose to fund the law and then at that point, it would be enforceable again. Excellent. And then, so one of the benefits of complying with the MBTA community's law. Well, what we would do is we would retain ability, or eligibility, I should say, for at least 17 state grant funding programs and then providing money for areas like protecting areas from storms and flooding, also upgrading infrastructure, including a sidewalk project that we have on Washington Street. And then for perspective, in 2023 and 24, we've received, the town of Duxbury received over $2 million that we would be ineligible for if the town was non-compliant under the MBTA communities act. Currently, we have applied for $100, $2 million in new grants for which we would be ineligible. So that gives you a sense of what the exposure is from noncompliance, part of the exposure that we have. So, and then the other, the other main benefit that we have by complying with the MBTA communities law is that we will maintain control over our zoning. We'll be able to avoid additional costs to achieve compliance, costs associated with town meeting, consultants that we've engaged, legal fees and things of that sort, costs that we've incurred over the course of our preparing this proposition for the town to vote on. If we don't choose our own zoning locations, in other words, if we're non-compliant, there's a possibility that the state could choose those for us. Excellent. And here, at this point, I will hand it over to Ted Carpenter and Ted will walk us through the maps and the bylaw. Thank you, Ted.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. All right, so we'd like to show you, here is the proposed districts. This is the MBTA communities overlay district. That's what MCOV stands for. There are two locations, sub-districts associated with the MCOT district. You'll see we have on the right, MCOT Tremont, which is the Park at Allen Creek development. And on the left is MCOT Kingstown, which is presently the Village at Duxbury. These locations were selected specifically because they are some of the most densely developed locations in town. And this is a viable approach to achieving compliance to place the overlay district over zoning where multi-family housing already exists. So as far as the actual impact of this overlay zoning, we'll look at each of the specific districts in a moment. The MCOT Kingstown location on the left, the Village at Duxbury, is presently developed at a density of 12 units per acre. And the density specified in the proposed bylaw amendment is also 12 units per acre. So it results in no net potential for additional development there. At the Park at Allen Creek at MCOT Tremont, there is a specification for 19 units per acre of density, which is greater than what is there now. But because the site is already fully developed, we don't expect that there would any, be any new construction resulting there either. So to the next slide, please. This shows you each of the two locations in closer detail. And so you can see by the yellow outline, which is the boundary of the sub-district in each case, the lines are drawn very tightly around the existing construction. The parcel on the left, where the Village of Duxbury is, the corporation actually owns a larger extent of land. That portion of, that's the left is also owned by the Village of Duxbury, but it is not part of the overlay district. So it doesn't present any additional rights for development in that area. Similarly, over in orange, you can see the Park at Allen Creek. It includes properties owned by Beacon, where most of the housing is, at the Street Frontage is another organization, Keith Companies, I believe. And in the lower left is the Baptist Church And uh, in the lower left is the Baptist Church and the, the yellow boundary includes a portion of the Baptist Church land, uh, which is currently developed for parking. So virtually all of the land here that's within the bounds is already fully developed. It really doesn't present any possibility of adding uh, new structures into that new area without, you know, significant uh, investments in, in the redevelopment of the existing facilities. So that is the summary of the districts. Uh, we had the question of, uh, why are we proposing to put this zoning over existing multifamily housing? Uh, this is an approach which has been approved by the Executive Office of Housing and Movement Communities. It's been done in Braintree and Hingham and approved in both cases. Um, as we just discussed, the expanded development rights that are included in the amendment uh, will create very little opportunity to add new units. Uh, adding new units is uh, to the existing uh, apartments. It really makes it impossible. You'd have to pretty much demolish things that are there to redevelop the site. We already discussed that the Village of Duxbury is, is already at twelve units per acre. And so related to presenting prospect there. Uh, also, of course, any, uh, the village, that is a, a cooperative corporation. So it would require both of all of the residents to give up their homes and, and redevelop. This doesn't make any sense. And another point to consider in terms of the uh, Island Creek locations, that their wastewater treatment facility, which services all of the residences there, and I understand is also supporting the church, is operating essentially at capacity. And so there isn't, again, the infrastructure to support immediate development in that location. So I think we're going to switch back to Steve for the remainder of the question.
Thank you. So uh, at this point we get to, you know, what's our, what's our strategy here? So really four, four parts to it. Um, the first part is, is creating the zoning plan that complies with the MBTA Communities Act, uh, in case our lawsuit fails. So um, we uh, looked at the, we saw the districts the Ted just presented. Uh, and then there's the bylaw that goes along with it. That's part of what the planning board is going to be voting on tonight. Um, is the, the bylaw. So the, the two things go hand in hand, the, uh, the map and the bylaw, uh, for a special time meeting vote on June sixteen. Um, so that's the first part is creating that zoning plan. We've done that. Um, the plan also is to, uh, to zone the properties where the development of new housing would be extremely difficult or unlikely. Um, and Ted emphasized the reason why, um, you know, we're overlaying existing dense development in the town. It really does minimize the possibility uh, that some additional, additional development would occur. Um, the uh, strategy here also is to maintain our eligibility for state money, uh, and state grants that were currently, uh, in their, in our current uh, interim compliance status that we're currently still eligible for right now. Uh, and then also to avoid enforcing action from the state. Um, but while at the same time, you know, really minimizing the creation of new housing. Um, and then if, uh, you know, if for some reason in the future, you know, if we were to adopt this, but then, and if the, uh, the law were to become invalid at some point in the future, uh, the town could respond if it so wished, the town wished to do so, uh, by repealing the bylaw at a future town meeting to remove the, the MBTA Communities Overlay District. Um, so that's an option that the town has in the event that the law is invalidated at some point in the future. Um, and we had, and we had passed the, uh, we had passed the bylaw. Uh, we could revoke it if we wanted to. Again, the, uh, this thing had invalidated it. Um, so what's next? Uh, so we have another couple of information sessions coming up here at the end of the month. Uh, one on May twenty-eighth, six to eight P M, uh, in Maryroom at the library. Uh, and then on June fourth, from one to three P M, so that would be during the day, uh, also in the Maryroom. Um, and then we'll be, we'll be doing this presentation here, uh, and answering questions from the public. Um, we're right now at the, uh, the hearing on May twelfth. Um, and then June sixteen, uh, at seven P M, uh, will be the, the special town meeting. Uh, so we encourage everybody, uh, to please come to the town meeting and vote on the proposal that we've, uh, we've shared with you here. And we'll be back and pull out your phone, take a, take a snap and learn more. Thank you very much. Um, and so at this point, uh, we're happy to, uh, open it up to the, the board, to the public. Uh, any questions or comments that they may have?
Yeah. We know that you all have been working lots, lots of weeks, lots of nights, lots of weeks, you know, you've been working a lot of workshops, thank you very much. Your help, and it's all that we have to talk about. So let's start with the board, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, I, I would like to commend the, 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 the town people may not appreciate how often that they've been meeting, uh, and putting together a plan. That is truly what you may read the clever around paper compliance. It allows the town to comply with the law without the likelihood of any additional units being built. Can you, can you say that there's, uh, there's no way that additional units will be built? No, you can't, can't say that. But the likelihood and the work that they've done in identifying these two lots is, it, it, it limits the amount that, the likelihood. One thing I'd like to, to ask the board is, well, or the working group. On the, at the Island Creek, we said there, there's additional, they're zoned for a certain density at, at what level now? And we're going to zone it at nineteen. What, what's the delta there? Do we know what they're zoned for now? Um. Thank you.
Uh, so right now, um, the, uh, so we talked about Island Creek. Uh, and then we look at the, so they, I guess there's two ways to think about it. Um, there's the Island Creek complex that we, that we know and understand. Um, and then there's the, uh, the sub-district boundary that we've drawn around it. So those are, those are kind of two different, two different things. Uh, so actually, Emily, could you pull up the map here? Um, and uh, I think it's the, uh, the detailed map that shows the two. There we go. Okay, uh, so MCOD Tremont's there, so the one on the right. Uh, it's coming up. Uh, anyway, um, but so when we talk about what the density is, we're not talking about the, the complex as a whole necessarily. Uh, what we're talking about is the area that's bounded by the yellow, what, the, the yellow perimeter there. Um, and so, uh, the, the, in the bylaw, we're, um, uh, you know, we're, we're proposing in the bylaw that this be zoned at nineteen units per acre. And right now the area that's bounded by the yellow boundary, uh, that's approximately twelve.
To understand it, the way you identified the village, it's virtually not, not possible, but very, truly unlikely that any units would be built. They would have to tear down and build at the same density. At the Island Creek, yes, there's a little bit more density there. But as I, I think Ted may have pointed out, the septic system is at capacity. So to not only would they have to, it would, it would be a significant cost for developers to commit and increase the Island Creek and address uh, either building an, an additional septic system or increasing the existing septic system. And that's significant costs and as a cost management analysis from a developer, I don't know that that would be even worth it. Um, like I said, you can't rule it out, but the likelihood of any more additional development being done here. It, it, it slimmed it down. And I think the other point to, to maybe even stress is, we are, uh, dual tracking and exemption, right? But even if that exemption lawsuit was to be successful, the state can remedy that by electing to fund the, fund the law, which would then take the unfunded mandate discussion off the table. But I think that's two points that, you know, that is important to stress for town people who are watching on the, on the YouTube board. No, not the, uh, true. Uh, but anyway, I, I just wanted to, you know, the working group has done a tremendous amount of work on this. And I think the, uh, the two locations that you guys have identified are just the best case scenario for the town. And, and my last question slash comment is more for Amy, the town council. I, I hear a lot and I think that's good for the public to know because there is the threat that you couldn't move funding. And I think it's good for everybody to know that whether that's actually as imperative that for other towns that have noncompliance.
Thank you, uh, through you, uh, Madam and Mr. Chair. Oh, good evening, my name is Greg Porbo. Um, I am, um, one of the attorneys at KP Law, that is your town council. Um, and I've been, uh, presenting the town as lead counsel on the, on the litigation that is challenging the MBTA Communities Act. Um, in direct answer to your question, um, in my experience, yes, um, grants are certainly at risk if you are not in compliance. I've represented another community, um, who did not create the interim action plan by mid-February, um, and within days of that, a school grant was rescinded. Uh, so yes, the, um, the threat of adverse action against you if you remain in noncompliance or if you enter noncompliance, um, is significant and rare.
Madam Chair, if you would indulge, I have a question for, for Greg regarding litigation that I thought would be very useful for the group.
Yes.
Uh, so there's been some discussion this evening about the lawsuit. Um, and we're talking about an action that Duxbury filed against the Commonwealth. And we've been talking mainly about one component of the lawsuit, which is the unfunded mandate provision. And this is why it's really helpful to have Greg here. Uh, so when Greg went to argue the case this past Friday in Superior Court, and I know that around town, there's been some discussion about whether our legal position is roused inconsistent with what the MBTA Communities, uh, group is doing. The answer is no, there's no inconsistency. What was argued on Friday, and I'm not going to speak for Greg, but I'll let him talk in just a second, uh, is that we need more time. Uh, and to be clear, the, the town of Duxbury is not asking for more time to comply with the law. What we're, what we're arguing is the underlying law should not be applied to Duxbury at all. So it's futile for us to go forward with a, a special town meeting for the purposes of adopting, um, a bylaw that we feel, um, okay, uh, for adopting a bylaw that is going to be, uh, inapplicable anyway. Uh, Commonwealth came back and said, well, you know what? Paper compliance is great, we'll take anything at this point. Um, and that, there's been some confusion because there were four or five lawyers arguing for a bunch of different positions on Friday. So just to clarify, Duxbury's position, uh, is that we feel that we shouldn't have to comply with this at all. That's what we're asking for the injunction for. All this work that the working group has been doing is in the event we don't get the injunction and we do have to proceed, so we're not in noncompliance, the inferior point, uh, that we have something ready to go, and that's the paper compliance model. Greg, could you just add a little bit more about, um, what was argued on Friday with respect to the more time question?
Excellent. Yes, thank you, uh, through you. So, um, where we stand in this litigation is we're at the, the very beginning of the litigation. And then we filed a motion for preliminary injunction, which seeks temporary relief from the court at this point to give us an opportunity to litigate a case without being penalized for engaging in this litigation. Uh, so what we are arguing in court, at least at this very early stage, is that, um, the court should stay any enforcement obligations until there's a final decision on merits of the lawsuit. Uh, and there are in fact two claims as part of this lawsuit. Claim is that, um, the act and regulations, um, constitute an unfunded mandate. Insofar as they impose costs, not only monetary costs, but service costs from the town in terms of how to create these bylaws. Then a, as was indicated, you know, the future is going to hold, you don't know what's going to happen. And at some point, um, if this housing is built, um, there are additional costs that are imposed upon Duxbury that will to a point, um, you know, these will include, um, higher additional personnel, um, buy additional equipment, make infrastructure upgrades. Um, these are all things that are directly related to the passage of this act. The, the second argument is that, um, the regulations, um, go far beyond, far of, beyond what the act provided. And to the point where it's arbitrary and capricious in that it utterly fails to take into account Duxbury's unique circumstances in its ability to accommodate housing at the density that is being required. And again, you know, our position is that in telling Duxbury, you know, this is the, the size of the district you need, and this is the number of units that, that you need to allow, that they fail to take into account, you know, the unique environmental characteristics of Duxbury, you know, where it is, um, what type of water supply it has, what the, um, vulnerabilities of that water supply are, um, the, the threats posed by onsite septic systems. Um, just the fact that it is entirely remote from any, um, MBTA facility whatsoever. And the fact that it doesn't have the, the road infrastructure, the number of employees. Um, so for, for all of these reasons, not only is it an unfunded mandate, which is true, it could be funded at some point. Um, but it's, it's unreasonable to suggest that Duxbury could accommodate the type of housing that is anticipated by the act and that the regulations are invalid and should be declared invalid. And, you know, it should be up to Duxbury to decide how it wants to satisfy its requirements for providing multifamily housing um, in a way that is, you know, responsible for this community, not in the same exact way that is responsible for, uh, essentially every other, um, MBTA community. We argued in our papers that Duxbury has the same exact acreage and unit requirements as thirty-five other uh, MBTA communities, including communities that are part of the city of Worcester. Um, so, you know, to suggest that you are in the same position as them, I mean, in my opinion, and what I argued is, is not a reasonable interpretation of the law. And so, um, you know, what we're asking for is an opportunity to face. And yes, you have this, um, law that has been, I understand it has not been approved yet by, um, HLC, which remains an issue. And as you saw last time, right, they come in at the very last minute and sobriety, your efforts. Um, there is also knowing that it is going to be approved at town meeting. As all of us know, that there's no ability to control the, you know, we can give them information, we can make arguments, but at the end of the day, it's up to those voters to decide. And, you know, if those voters decide that this is not the right, uh, proposal for, for the community, and I'm not arguing that one way or another, but if that is what they decide, um, purpose of this lawsuit is to make it so that you're not immediately penalized, uh, for that decision and that you have an opportunity to, um, present your full and complete case to the court on what this law is en, enforced against you.
Thanks, Greg. So, so they're, we're doing things in parallel, so that all the work is, the MBTA Communities Working Group has put in a ton of time to have something prepared, assuming we don't continue the injunction. And that's, that's what I wanted to lay out tonight because there's, there's so many moving parts, um, that we're not arguing against ourselves here. We're, we're arguing in parallel, um, with the hope that, uh, the, that, um, uh, the judge agrees with, uh, Greg's articulate argument. Uh, but we can't determine what a judge is going to do until the end of the day. Um, and then we move forward based upon the deadlines that were imposed upon us by the state. Um, and this is a process we have to go through. This is a terrific presentation, um, by the MBTA Communities Working Group with, uh, the expectation that if as and when we have to go through with, um, asking town meeting to look at this, that we know this is the best possible, uh, uh, program that we could have, could have put together, having the, the least likely impact on the town. Thank you, Madam Chair. That was a long, uh, detour, but important information.
So say, uh, we do the forward and John and Bill took our eyes and we both said, yes, okay, we think it's a great idea. And it turns out that the judge will get in our favor, we don't actually need to comply. Would you explain, you know, as we talked about it amongst our board, we still have a general understanding what would happen, but could you maybe explain to everyone here how we could actually go about repealing that if that was the case, we wanted to do that?
Uh, yes, thank you through Madam Chair. Well, so, you know, the bylaw, uh, it's, it's, uh, it means that even if it's approved, it's subject to amendment by town meeting. It's subject to, um, repeal by town meeting. And it would be revealed, amended in the same exact way it's being brought. Uh, there will be a proposal submitted and brought to the planning board, uh, the planning board would hold a public hearing. Um, it would either endorse it or not, and then it would get decided at town meeting. Uh, if this is not, not be approving an MBTA zoning bylaw, it would be subject to a two-thirds vote. And then we need to make that decision. So, um, you know, no, something is etched in stone ever. Um, and the, the procedures are exactly the same whether it's MBTA communities or otherwise.
Greg, um, you mentioned, uh, you just mentioned two-thirds vote. Um, it, the adoption approval requires only a simple majority vote because it involves housing. Um, so I just wanted you, could you clarify what you meant by two-thirds vote?
Uh, yes, so this is, you know, just how to vote for my family housing. Just wanted to, to check before the, uh, approval of the bylaw requires the majority. Um, if you were to fund the bylaw or rescind the bylaw, that is not now creating opportunities for affordable housing. So that would still be a two-thirds vote at town meeting, just like any other zoning bylaw.
Very helpful. I know, um, I appreciate you at the mercy of the judge to give any inclination as to when he made, when he got you. It used to be the June sixteenth, so.
Yeah, we, we definitely made the point that, um, you know, these are, you know, we're, we're under very strict deadlines here, and is aware of that. Um, but no, we have asked. He's aware of that. But no, we have absolutely no control over when you might make a ruling. Thank you, Madam Chair.
If you have any questions, we'll go ahead and open it up to the floor. Anybody on the board, live Zoom? Again, if we could limit our comments to questions, two, three minutes, that'd be great. If you have anyone to start here in the audience, is anybody here have any questions? We'll go ahead and open it up to the board. Is there anybody on, on the, on the Zoom call that would like to come off mute and ask this question or share a thought? No comments from any of our Zoom callers? All right, we'll take one for the audience.
Alicia Babcock, Ocean Road South. I'm a member of the working group. And I have been tasked over the last couple of weeks to see what some of these other towns have been doing in the event this doesn't pass. And it's sort of sent me down some research that has brought forward some questions that I have and just some concerns and some information, general information that I think would be helpful. I, I did hear a couple of interviews and read some things online from our new representative, Ken Sweets. I don't know if anybody's had any contact with him, but he's pushing that pretty hard on this. And I know that he's filed three bills. One to repeal the act, two to exempt adjacent communities, and three to peel back the regulations because originally it was just four grants. And then they expanded it to all discretionary funds. So I'm just curious if town council has any information on where that might stand or if there's been any communication with the state rep on, on those bills?
Through you, Madam Chair, I have not had any contact. Same representative, however, I have been representing other communities. And there are other local legislators that are also supporting the same, if not similar, information. Or not just legislation.
Yeah, it seems like they're all sort of banding together to, to do the same thing. And I know one of them wrote a supportive letter for the town of Weston. I know we were in court with Weston. And Weston's just taken the position that, you know, actually the planning board hasn't, nobody's supported it. So the planning board wrote a, wrote a letter to the state and also the representative did. And the slot board basically just saying, explaining how it didn't work for them, you know, in the same way. And as far as the, as far as the Island Creek development, it, it appears that, I don't know if anybody has seen the, the new, the new strategy that's come out from the, from the state. February it was, it was posted. It's a Massachusetts statewide housing plan. It's called The Home for Everyone. I don't know if anybody has seen that, but it might be worthwhile to read. It's pretty much maps out the whole, the whole plan. And, you know, how they intend to roll out, you know, incentives and things for, to support infrastructure and all of that. So I just wanted to make everybody aware that there are, you know, there are incentives for building beyond what we're, what we're saying. There are, you know, great tax incentives for big developers to create large affordable housing developments to offset their portfolios. So, you know, I think between that and the fact that there's some infrastructure incentives as well coming in from the state, it's not just fully landing on the developer, I think, for them to upgrade a lot of the things that we're kind of relying on, you know, as guardrails for Duxbury. And I just want to make sure that we're paying attention to those things, you know, because we don't want to get, we don't want to get caught, you know, kind of wishful thinking. It's hard to purchase up in the mind frame of a developer, but they think very differently. They're much more aggressive and, you know, they've got different, different goals on, you know, how they go about doing things. So I just wanted to make everybody aware about that. And then the other thing that I came across was I have a little, some concerns about the train station in Kingston, that being a funny spur line. I don't know if anybody's been to Kingston Train Station lately. But it's really off the beaten path. There's one road in and one road out to get to the parking lot, it's up behind the mall. And I think it's, it's only got about 1,030 parking spaces. And it's pretty, pretty desolate back up in there. And I think the fact that the state is focusing on that as the MBTA location for all these towns surrounding Kingston to be relying on, on that, I think it's, I think it's something to think about. It's, I, I don't know how you would accommodate all the cars and the traffic coming in and out of that one little road. There's also a train station in North Plymouth where they, you know, they, there, there's a housing development there as well. So just in the event they wind up bypassing the Kingston station, I want to make sure that Duxbury doesn't get stuck with all of the, all the housing that we could be generating. That's all. It's just, just things to think about. That's all. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, no problem.
That's the other question, is there a question from the public on Zoom? If not, I think we can go ahead and go to the closing of the public hearing. Do I post the public hearing to the redbomb or no?
So Madam Chair, I guess before you close the public hearing, you should, if the board is going to vote for recrimination, you should do that before you close the hearing. Yes?
So did we have a motion from the board to go ahead and, a motion to vote to recommend favorably and supportive approval of the MBTA Communities overlay or special town meeting zoning article?
Hello?
Second, second? Do we have any discussion? I have actually worked with Matt this, the, the community, the, the working group. I really appreciate everything that the working group has done. A lot of hours, a lot of discussions, a lot of time with town council, and a lot of time with our, our consultants to provide us guidance. And I think it does, it's a fact of that that he's a positive role for. We really appreciate everything he's done, and the opportunity we've created with us coming together. And appreciate all the time that he's been put to and include all of the communities too in gathering information from them and using that and everything like that. So without that, as I said, everybody else. All in favor?
Aye.
You want to vote? The question passed. Thank you. All right, so now we'll vote to close the article. Meaning so, a motion to close 615 and Article 615 p.m. and articles submitted by the planning board, see if the town will vote to amend the zoning map at MBTA Communities overlay district map, and to amend the zoning bylaw at a new section for forwarding MBTA Communities multifamily overlay district, or any other related activity.
Go move.
And you have second? Second, thank you. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? If I?
Aye.
Before the vote is 20 seconds. All right, the motion passed.
You have nothing else, and you just have your agenda.
No, I was just triple tapping. All right, as we have a motion to close the meeting. Thank you. All those in favor?
I'd make a motion as well for the MBTA Communities Working Group to get it performed here. I, we can use a motion to adjourn this meeting of the MBTA Communities Working Group.
Go move.
Thank you. Very excited.
Second.
Thank you. For all presenters, anybody online, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any seconded? No, we are adjourned.